Just a little while ago, and, you know, many of us know Barbara Rue, George's son. And I personally know George's great-grandson, Bear, who's actually in fourth grade with my son. So I've seen not only George here at town council meetings and, you know, railing for this, against that, namely the pond behind his house or to the side of his house. Good to know that the town did take care of that about five years ago. He championed for work to be done on that pond. It cleaned up very well, and it's actually a really nice-looking pond right next door to his house. I personally called George last Monday. I didn't talk to him. I talked to his wife, but I introduced or I invited him to the first town council meeting back in public. Unfortunately, he wasn't home at the time, probably taking Bear to some practice or something like that. But, you know, it's sad to think that I called him to welcome him back. He had gotten his vaccines, survived World War II, Korea, God knows what went on between Korea and, you know, the pandemic. Raised three kids and countless grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. My heart goes out to the Rue family and to George's wife. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything on behalf of, you know, those that knew him. I know he's been before you in council and on Board of Education.
Yeah. Shocking news. Didn't know anything that was going on. And, you know, George was always pretty direct with you. But the number one thing about George, which is different in many ways, is he always gave you the respect that he would ask of himself. And he could agree with you or disagree with you, but you had a civil conversation with a member of this community. And he fought for what he believed in, and he did it in a good, civil way. And I always respected George for that. And I think as he got, I've known George as long as I've been doing it, 20 years now. And as long as we've done this, he always, he always thought of us, it is, we're working on this whole thing together. And he always compromised in, not his principles, but in a discussion to say, I understand what you're saying, here's what I'm saying, let's see if we can do together. I'm very sad for the Rue family. It's a shock, you just, I didn't know, but, you know, I just found out second, minutes ago now. But, yeah, my thoughts go out to their family, their strong Weathersfield family, as you said, Mayor, and always respected Mr. Rue, George, and I think he always respected everyone that served as well. And I appreciated that, probably most of all, the respect. Definitely. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. If you don't mind, if we take a moment of silence just to remember George, George A. Rue, 946 Cloverdale Circle. So, please. He wouldn't want it any other way.
Exactly. Okay. Moving on to the adoption of the fiscal year, actually, we got to go first. This is a carryover from our meeting last Monday. This is the town and Board of Ed health insurance change of vendor provider. I know Matt had some concerns at that meeting on notice. I think Gary, if you can fill us in on some of the conversations, possibly with Attorney Plum, and proper notice for that.
Mayor and to council, just briefly, in speaking with council, we're kind of at a point, since the budget is also at hand, that the town's point is, or belief is that we gave proper notice with sufficient time and that the recommendation is to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Do we actually have a, is there a motion, or would it be the same motion as last Mondays?
It'd be the previous motion. Hold on, one more. Do you have it handy? Might be best.
I'll reread the motion. It's a motion to award a contract for administrative services with Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company and pharmacy benefit management with Express Scripts and to authorize the town manager to execute a contract and related agreements for the same.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Councilman Forrest.
Thanks, Mayor. Gary, just to understand, it's our council's opinion that legal notice was given according to our collective bargaining agreements for these purposes?
Correct. That we should move forward, and if the union feels otherwise, they have a process by which they can follow.
Well, that's a different answer, though, right? We should move forward is not, was, is it our council's opinion that legal notice was given according to our requirements under the collective bargaining contracts?
According to our, yes. Answer is yes.
All right. All right. Because there's a difference between the two. All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Stain? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Onto item number two, adoption of the town of Weathersfield 2021, 2022 budget. Do we want Mike? Do you want to come up, Mike? For any questions?
Mike O'Neill, Director of Finance. I'd be happy to take questions, but I can just take you briefly through the package that you have before you. The first couple pages are just the motions that are necessary to pass the budget and its various components. And then behind that are a number of revenue and expenditure schedules, just to reconcile what you were given on April 5th was the proposed budget, the town manager's budget, and the changes that have been made to that in coming up with, again, just the figures that are reflected in the motions. And the changes are really a combination of updates, corrections, you know, for the state passed a budget. We have updated municipal aid numbers from them. There were some corrections, adjustments for estimates that we now know the actual numbers for, pension contribution being the most significant one there. We've built in the savings for the motion that you just passed, the move to Cigna, and that's going to save the town at least a quarter of a million dollars. So that's reflected in the adjustments as well. And then there were several others that, just in conferring with the Republican Caucus, that were proposed by them, built into this for consideration tonight. So maybe the best way for everyone to kind of get their arms around the numbers, if you go to page six, which is, it's the second page of the expenditure schedule, and I'll just kind of, at the bottom of that, you can see just where the changes are to the expenditure budget, the expenditure appropriations. So just looking at the lower right-hand corner on page six, you were presented with a budget that totaled 100, and I'll just speak in round numbers for everyone's, just to keep it, keep things moving. You were presented with a budget totaling $112 million. You can see that in the, kind of, the middle of the page. The middle column there was the town manager's proposed budget. The second column from the right are the adjustments to that budget. And then the rightmost column is, again, the figures that are reflected in the motions that you have before you. So in total, that proposed budget was reduced by $2,343,835 for a total budget of $109,000 and change. That $2.4 million reduction was split, 1.1 million against the town's budget and 1.2 million reducing the Board of Ed budget. And you can see the detail of those, all of those changes on the following page. It's a, I apologize for the small print, but it's basically what you have on page seven is the proposed budget in the leftmost column, and then all of those changes detailed by department in the columns that progress from the left. And then in, on the right-hand side is that same budget, $109 million budget. Give people a moment. If they want to ask questions, I can give you some highlights.
Entertained questions for Mr. O'Neill? Councilman Forrest?
I have a ton, but I didn't know if you wanted to, I mean, this is out of respect. This is a majority budget. You're the mayor. If you wanted to outline anything, I do have a lot of questions about what we're taking and putting in and taking out, but I didn't want, I think it's respectful if, you know, this is your caucus's first total presentation to the entire council.
Sure. I appreciate that. And I'll turn to Deputy Mayor Mazzarella shortly, as he has been leading the charge on this these last couple weeks. But I guess a carryover of the pandemic, similar to last year, is that by executive order, the deadline to file budget has been moved to June 30th. Our date is set by charter at May 15th. Obviously, we didn't want to go right until June 30th. We did hear from Mr. O'Neill that that would catch kind of close to time to get the budget or the property tax bills out. But in looking at both the proposed budget from the town manager and from the Board of Ed, there was some concerns and some, plenty of good parts of the budget, but there were some concerns where some spending may be either taken off of the town side and, you know, included in additional revenue from the state, or for the first time, I think, in my tenure on this council, use of federal funds through what is commonly referred to as the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. You might hear that acronym a number of times tonight. I think every municipality, probably across the nation, who's trying to compile a budget at this time, is trying to find the guidance through the Department of Treasury on how to best utilize those ARPA funds. And we were no different. I think probably four, five, maybe even six times a week, we were calling either Town Manager or Mike O'Neill, is there any guidance on the ARPA funds and how can we use those? Are there any parameters that we have to abide by? We got clarification about a week and a half ago on those. As far as the state funds, everybody knows that the governor proposes a budget in an odd year, early on in the legislative session. The legislature takes a look at his proposed budget and either gives a stamp of approval or comes up with their own appropriations budget, appropriations and finance budget. Keeping with practice, appropriations and finance, and the legislature approved a budget. Governor, if he hasn't signed it, he has showed his intent to sign the bipartisan budget from the state, which increased municipal funding. In our case, I think approximately 775,000 or so, both education and state, 773,000, if I'm not mistaken, town and education funding. So that helped us craft the finer points of the budget. This budget, similar to the state budget, does not increase taxes. I'm hoping that we would get, like the state budget, a bipartisan support of this budget. It does, like the states, rely on federal funding to some degree, and those are spelled out in, I believe, and Mike, you might need to point me in the right direction on where it's spelled out that the ARPA funds are used.
Sure. The best place to, I guess the only place to see that is on page seven. There's a column, fourth column over from the left, it says, it's captioned, "ARPA Funding", and you can see, if you follow that down, the total ARPA funds, rescue plan funds that are being used in this budget is $425,184.
Thank you. So with guidance from the Department of Treasury on that, as well as the increase in state funding to municipalities, and Weathersfield in particular, we were able to draft up a proposed budget that is before you tonight, that, again, does not raise taxes. In fact, it would reduce the town's mill rate, .02 percent, or .02 mills, which would be a 40.67, down from a 40.69, which I believe is down from a 40.74 two years ago at this, when we sat at this table last. Spending is up, as we can see in Mike's presentation, but there are some reductions that we have taken on both the Board of Ed side and on the town side. And I would like to recognize our Board of Ed Chairman and Member of Board of Ed as well, Ken Lesser, who's here. We worked, leadership of Board of Ed and leadership of the town council worked together to craft this, and I believe in talking with the Board of Ed, they are comfortable with some of the proposed, if not all, the proposed cuts that were included and reductions that were included on the board's side. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Would it be easier for Matt to come up with some questions, or I can just, I can go through it, but I don't want to waste a lot of time.
It's your budget. I mean, there are certainly some things that, you know, we're going to talk about, I think, but I'm, I mean, you guys came up with this yesterday, which was a weekend, and then today, three or four hours ago, whatever, we're now, Saturday, we got Scenario E. So I'm not going to go on to stuff like, I'm listening right now, listening to what you guys have crafted, how it's, what it's going to do to the town, not do for the town, and I'm listening.
Okay. I'll run through it, and I just didn't want to bore everyone.
This is a big deal. This is where, this is where it happens, right now.
Yes. Okay. So first, I want to point out a couple adjustments to the town manager's proposed budget. There was, there was a couple errors that had to be corrected. One of them was fairly significant, where we accounted for SRT2 funds in both the Board of Ed and on the town side. So we had to adjust 607, 497 out of that, which is, you know, fairly big hit, .26 of a mil. We also had to correct an error in a bond premium issue that came up of another 59,000, roughly. And we failed to include a CMed assessment, it's, I can't remember what the acronym is, for the medical.
Medical dispatch.
Medical dispatch.
That's a, that's a regional dispatch group.
Thanks, Mike. That was 23,667. So right out of the gates, we were kind of going in the wrong direction. The total spending would have gone up. I'm going to run through the town side reductions, and I'll just start with pension contribution valuation, got adjusted by the actuaries, $20,000 reduction. Savings in medical insurance was 91,406. Medical insurance savings through Cigna was another 100,000. We reduced, there's $140,000 that was taken from the CREC fund that's, when the CREC property was, I don't know how to word it. Northeast Utilities gave us $2 million, roughly, put in a fund, and 140,000 is accrued interest that can be used on capital projects. So we used that 140,000 for that.
Was that to, was that to, did you take out CIP projects for that?
We are taking care of CIP projects through that. We've targeted roofs on Highcrest School for that.
For the 140,000, 140,000 is removed, reduced CIP contribution.
I'll let Mike explain how that works.
Sure. So it's funded from the CREC trust, not from the general fund budget. So it's, it's removed from the tax levy, so to speak. So it comes, comes out of the general fund budget, which is what you have before you. Project stays, though. It'll be funded from the CREC trust.
Okay.
The ARPA funds that Mike discussed, $45,000 for the Health District. So that's a 25% share of what Health District charges us, and that was the number that we were given that is charged towards the COVID expenditures, if you will. We're funding Dial-A-Ride program, $123,000, also out of the ARPA funds, which is an allowable use of the funds. We're restoring the 157,184 in parks and rec wages that was reinstituted after the Willard Pool was closed and the summer camps and other park and rec summer operations. And we're going to use $100,000 of the ARPA funds to renovate the Charles Wright Portables. Next, we skip down to council reductions of 417,000. Is that correct?
Those will all be on page seven. Those are in the, there's a column called Department Reductions. You do not have the detail or quite a number of small reductions in particular line items.
Right. So I can kind of run through those. Town manager's budget, we reduced that by $3,000. We reduced elections by $4,000. Tax assessor by $4,000. Planning and development by $4,000. Police by 96,94. Fire marshal by 1,000. Fire suppression by 4,000. Physical services, 50,700. Public library, 20,934. And then we have, is this CIP, CNEF, Mike? Is this correct, 316?
Sorry, I was distracted for a moment. Yes, 316, correct.
316,000.
And there is a breakdown of that amount, and people are interested, that you'd find that on page?
Last page.
Eight. I'm sorry. Page nine, you're right, Tom.
That was...
This is eight? Nine?
Nine.
Sorry, it actually doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't show what was taken out. You'd have to compare it to the page D2 in the pink book, which I'm sure no one has with them this evening.
In that one? D2. There's $140,000 on D2, but there's not 316,000.
Sorry.
Unless we use something else.
There were reductions from 40,000 to 20,000 for portable radio replacements. There was a reduction from 20,000 to 10,000 for the radio shelter upgrades. There were two fire department items, a hydraulic rescue tools and air bottles. Those items were taken out, and those will be funded with remaining funds that we have. So we'll do a purchase order for those this month, and we'll use funds from the current year for that.
Can you just repeat which lines those were?
You want page E2?
I am.
Townwide radio, two items, both reduced by 50%.
You were talking about the fire department.
Well, I was talking about the radio first. I'm going to get to that. Fire department, two items, 40,000 and 15,000, both removed to be funded from the current year's operating budget. One item from physical services, a dump truck with a plow, $168,000 removed.
Is that one being replaced? Is that one being paid for from a different source?
No.
The others?
And then there was a transit van for the Board of Ed, $18,000 also removed.
I'm just waiting for him. You all set?
Does that equal, I haven't done, finished doing the math, and that, those items collectively equal the?
316.
The 316?
Correct.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot more questions, but I'm not.
Yeah, no, I just.
There's got, we've got a good flow going right now.
Okay. So now I'm going to switch over to the Board of Ed side, and we're going to start out with a number of reductions to their operating budget that are, that are not program-related. So 23,118 is an adjustment to the pension contribution. That's an actuarial number. The revised pension contribution, 24,061. An increase for 12,500 for cyber insurance policy that's split 50/50 between the town and the Board of Ed, and it was not in the original proposed budget. A reduction of 78,000 for OPEB contributions. 91,575, a reduction in medical insurance increase. 150,000 reduction in the medical insurance switch to Cigna. And an $805,000 reduction in medical insurance, and I just want to make note of that, that is, it's removed from the budget, but it's being funded by a surplus this year from the Board of Ed. They're prepaying this 805,000 out of unused funds, but it shows up as a reduction to the operating budget number.
That's a contribution that'll be made to the medical self-insurance fund in the current year, on top of what the board has already put in the fund.
Council reductions to their requested increase are 73,205. And those come, or will come from primarily three sources. Reduction in outplacement tuition for students returning to the district, anticipated savings related to district-wide legal costs, and projected retirement slash new hire savings, one teacher and one administrator. So in reality, we've reduced the Board of Ed request by 73,205. The next column, the road fund. Uh, the next column, the road fund, 1.8 million is untouched, so we will be doing another 1.8 million in roadwork. We are using 1.58 million in fund balance to reduce our burden on the taxpayers. And I don't, I don't have anything else specific that I wanna mention. We'll be happy to try and answer your questions, Matt.
Well, it could be anybody.
Or anybody, well, I kind of was having a dialogue with you, so.
That flow we talked about.
Right, right. Okay. Let's start with the BOE. What is the basis for the outplacement uh, reduction?
Well, you, you know how the BOE works, right? We, we give them a number and they basically spend it how they see fit, if you will.
And is there prior?
So, so, we, we went to the Board of Ed through our Board Chair and asked to, as we did every department in town, you know, where, where could you cut? What you, what could you reduce without impacting services or, you know, student services, town services, et cetera? And uh, we came up with a number that we thought uh, was realistic to ask. And uh, that was concurrent by Board of Ed, uh, leadership that a 73,000 dollar reduction in pupil services, if you will, would, would be acceptable. And they had these three areas of suggested where that money would come from. I'm not, we're not allowed to say, okay, take it from column A or column B.
So, but what is the basis for uh, thinking that we won't need these expenditures for outplacements?
Um, I assume because uh, they're bringing students back into the district. So instead of, you know, some of these, some of these outplacements are hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, where?
You know, they have one or two students, I, I'm not privy to that detail, but they know they're coming back, or, or maybe they've graduated, or, or something like, you know, moved out of town. I don't, I don't know the details to that.
Right.
But they felt that was, you know, a realistic place to, you know, reduce the request.
And how much of the 73 was the outplacement?
Uh, let's see, um, 45,000. They, they have three columns here to add up to 85,000, but we're only using
With the legal cost reduction?
15,000.
And what has the trending been about, regarding the legal costs that we think that it's appropriate to have less legal costs?
We don't have knowledge of that, Matt. That's um, Board of Ed's side. They just, we asked what could be done and that's what they gave us.
And back to the special ed, you know, and some of those workshops that we sat in, I don't know if you sat in on them, Matt, with the Board of Ed. They uh, discussed the new STRIVE program that um, Superintendent Emmett was working towards to keep more kids in district. And I believe there is, they were looking at two positions. One is a special ed admin position, which would um, help with the um, you know, controlling the outplacement costs.
Yes, we've been working toward there, that's why we built the school on uh,
Transition Academy.
The Transition Academy, exactly. Okay.
And the last one was uh, teacher retirements.
And the difference?
So you're, 25,705. Now, they, they don't have to use all those, because there's more money there than, than the 73,000. So that, that was one teacher and one administrator, so you know how that works. They, they might, uh, retirement might go out at top level pay and they're anticipating they're gonna hire somebody in at a lower step.
Understood. The uh, moving on to the 417, 449. What was the basis for the townwide radio reductions?
There was a plan to do X amount of work each year. And that money got diverted last year for another project. So we were going back to the 50% amount.
And what, what's the basis of it, though? I understand that that's the change. Why would we reduce?
I'll let Counselor Pelletier speak to that.
Okay, so, and, and jump in if I misspeak as far as what we are reducing with the townwide radio, but there's the shelters. And last year during the budget process, um, we were told the goal was to replace one per year. And I don't have it in front of me, I don't know if it was, I think it was 10,000 per shelter. And um, this year, 20,000 was allocated presumably to replace two shelters. So we thought, let's stick with the original plan with replacing one a year. Cut one out, just do one this year to save the taxpayers' money. And the other item, and uh, I don't
Radios?
Those are portable radios.
Portable radios, I think it was the same, the same deal where we were, you know, it, so we're just gonna replace some, but not, you know, all. We're keeping it in line with what was requested last year, which was, you know, adequate. They replace, I, I guess however many units per year. And so we're replacing some and in line with what we were told last year was the, sort of the replacement schedule.
So, I, I mean, I think, did you finish? I didn't know if you were still going.
I, I just don't have the thing in front of me, so I'm just
Gary, I'm trying to understand how your original budget had one number for radio replacement, you know, after conversations with, of course, I mean, I'm, fire, police, ambulance, et cetera. And, and there was a replacement schedule, now if we have that, what effect or non-effect, or why, why would that be wise for us to do? Or unwise, as the case may be?
Well, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, it's my understanding that we had the schedule and they asked for twice what they, you know, more than what was in the schedule. That was my understanding, and that's why I felt, I feel comfortable reducing it by half in line with the original schedule. But you might have another understanding of the situation.
We both requests were for planning purposes, you know, to be, to have the funds in place in advance to try to do these things, you know, before something breaks, would be it a radio or a, uh, the environmentals and the shelters, that sort of thing. So it's, again, it's the kind of thing, uh, having some money is better than none at all. You know, if there's an emergency, we can make it work, you know, if there's more than one that needs to be repaired, if we need more units of the radios. Again, we, uh, the radio people put the request together and, you know, just part of the process was, you know, so it's not, it's not a, it's not like it was a, no one's gonna go without a radio. Could we have a number of units that are damaged and we have to replace more than we have money for? Sure, that happens, you know, in all areas of the budget, you know, there's, there's unforeseen unforeseen events. But again, we, we, you know, I was asked personally about this and in my discussions with uh, public safety folks, you know, we felt like we could, we could live with the reduction. We hope we don't see it every year, but, you know, again, we, we think we're, we're okay for now.
And we're on, we're funding it ongoing, I mean, this isn't
Right, right, there is
Dry up.
Yep.
There's a radio reserve also, which is typically used to offset the lease payments for the radio. So there are other funds also if there's an emergency and we need to, you know, we need to do additional work. You know, there's a place to turn for that.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the, the dump truck with plow, obviously put in this budget for a particular purpose. What was the basis for the removal of the dump truck?
Uh, we didn't see the need for the replacement of the dump truck. It's serviceable at this time. And uh, we did keep a Ford F350 with a plow in there that we feel will be more versatile uh, than a larger dump truck.
I noticed that on that line item, it says 50,000 dollars in grant funds. Do we give up the grant funds by not purchasing the truck?
Uh, we never had the grant funds. The grant funds are predicated on you retiring a, an obsolete vehicle of a certain age, of which we have one truck that would qualify for that.
So would this be the, that replacement, though?
Yeah, the replacement cost was actually 212, I believe.
Correct.
So if we don't get this particular dump truck, do we then give up on that 50,000 dollar assist?
We, we never had the assist. It was something that we were planning to apply for, if we were gonna purchase the dump truck.
But if we did purchase the dump truck, we would apply for it and then receive the assist?
Hopefully, yes.
Is that incorrect, Gary? I see you shrug a little.
Right, right, well, it's grant funding, so you, we would apply for it and there's a, we're competitive, so I would assume that we would get it, but I can't guarantee we would get it.
Okay.
But yes.
So it seems like, though, we, we would be forgiving that opportunity.
Yes.
Um, if we had gotten it next year, can we still apply for those funds?
It's been an ongoing program, I don't know how long it goes for.
Any insight, Gary?
Yeah, it's, it's subject to federal funding, so as long as the EPA continues to fund the program, we'll continue to be able to apply for it.
And that's the clean diesel?
Yes.
And we have in the past, I think
Mm-hmm.
most recently, two years ago, we replaced a dump truck. A clean, uh, more fuel-efficient, cleaner burning
On diesel, yeah.
Diesel.
So what is the difference, uh, there was a discussion about using the F350 either in place of, or as an assist for the dump truck with plow. Is there a, a use difference there?
It's a smaller
One is much a different, different price, certainly, it seems like
It's a smaller truck, it's basically a heavy-duty pickup truck, if you will, with a plow. So for a number of storms that we have in, have had typically in Weathersfield, you know, the two, three-inch storms, it's adequate to use that type of vehicle. There's, you don't need a CDL license for it, so more of the staff can use that truck. You can plow parking lots, cul-de-sacs, uh, you know, entrance ways and so forth. And we felt that it was a little bit more versatile, um, rather than having a, another large dump truck that um, doesn't get used every day on every project.
What was the basis for the initial request, though? I mean, the initial request was for both of these, there was a, there was a reason for it. Or was there a reason for it, and that's why there's a disagreement?
I mean, you, every department puts in their request and, you know, if you're, if you're the guy in charge of radios, I guess if you have an extra 100,000 dollars to buy radios, it's better than having 50,000, so the request gets funneled in.
Well, it gets past Gary, so, I mean, I think Gary reviews it for, you know, in his, in his eye. So Gary, this, this went past your eye to the 168. What was your understanding of the basis uh, for the dump truck and its needs that, you know, made it into your budget?
Yeah, well, in review, it's, year after year, we're asking for it. Every year it gets a little bit older, it gets a little bit more abuse, um, every season. So we try to look for a replacement schedule that fits. And, you know, at some point, we do have to address them and fix them, but, you know, it might not be this year. So, um, we have to look
Clearly, it might not be, but
Right.
I'm trying to understand the basis for it, of course. Are we at a point with this particular vehicle that its reliability is such that you didn't feel comfortable putting it into the fleet? Is that why we're here?
It, it's in the fleet, it's in serviceable condition. It's actually
I use reliability on purpose, the word, yeah. I get it might be working today, but
It's reliable, in my opinion.
I was seven feet over the car once, too, it wasn't reliable.
In reality, there are more dump truck, more large dump trucks than highway crew employees.
Interesting.
Road crew employees.
Right.
So it's primarily used during snowstorms, where all hands on deck, if you're in the maintenance department, you're called out to plow snow. So it's used for snow removal, it's also used for leaf collection. And other than that, it sits in the yard most of the time. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that, that truck averages less than 1,000 miles a year, where several of the large dump trucks might use 5,000 miles a year. So it's not used very often, it's not assigned to an individual. The trucks are assigned to a specific person. They're more or less required to look after that truck, make sure it's clean and serviced and that kind of thing. So this is a spare truck, um, and it's limited use.
How about the Board of Ed transit van? Bit of an outlier, sort of in our budget, but I understand we're sort of in charge of a little bit more of that stuff now. What was the understanding about why they don't need a transit van now?
They have, they have a number of vans, um, they felt the need to replace one. It's older.
So there, it sounds like, in the, in your opinion, that there wasn't really a good use case for replacing it? Reliability, use, et cetera?
I mean, they use it. To my knowledge, there's not reports that it's continually breaking down. It was a request for an upgrade.
Okay. The, um, I'm looking at the 140, 40,000 reduction to the CIP. And we have a page D4 which sort of outlines some of those reductions.
The 140
Excuse me, D2, not D4, I was looking at
Actually, if, if you go to page eight in the package
Eight in the package.
In this case, I did manage to put uh, together an exhibit that has the progression from the projects that were approved by the CIAC, the projects that were included in the town manager's budget, and then what's proposed for adoption. So that's on page eight.
Page eight is the total, right?
Page eight's the breakdown of the projects.
And then, and then there was a discussion, which, we, we had talked about this, 140,000 dollars, but it seems like there was an initial reduction, but then it was gonna get filled in by the 140,000 dollars from, you know, the residual of the, the school that was, you know, sold. And, but now it seems like it's not being filled in through this particular 140,000 dollar reduction. So we're talking about facade loan program, planet conservation, community center upgrades. Is it, and just so I'm clear, is it my understanding that these improvements are now being removed?
No.
All right, that's why I asked the question.
They're being funded from a different source. Instead of being funded from the general fund, the 140,000 is coming from the CREC fund.
Okay. And then the money that would normally come from that fund, is, where is that reduction, then? Because if we're using the CREC fund to fund this now, where, where did the money, that, where was it going that now we're not?
Wasn't going anywhere, it was sitting in a fund, uh, separate from the general fund.
You're, I think you're asking the difference between what the CIAC approved, just the first column on page eight.
Uh, 896.
And the proposed budget, the reductions to the town manager's budget from the CIAC recommendation. That reflect, the difference in those two columns reflects 100, there's 140,000 dollar difference there.
Down to the 756.
Correct.
Correct. So, is that still being removed, then? Are, are we still not funding the, the full 896?
Correct. You can see the progression for each project across the three columns.
Right, because initially, we were gonna use the CREC fund to pay for that difference, all these things. But now, I'm looking at F, it, we're removing that, so now these, these things are not being done in town, though. Facade loan program is not in this budget, planet conservation is not in this budget, repurposing the community center park repurposing the community center parking lot.
The facade loan program is in the budget. It was, the, the third column adopted general fund, we added it back in.
Okay.
But, yeah, a few of the other items have been removed.
So I was, I'm working from D two and then page eight. So on D two.
Page eight reflects D two.
Yeah, page eight has.
But at least, at least for the plan of conservation, it doesn't, because in D two, it's removed, but it, and then we're just, we're talking on eight, it's put back in. I don't know about.
D two's in the pink book.
On D two, it's reduced, not removed. So again, again, I would recommend going to page eight and looking at the progression across the three columns.
Sixty to fifty.
For each project, to see from recommendation to town manager to what's been built into the motions before you.
So we wanted to restore the facade improvement for fifty thousand, because we felt that, uh, it, it's a good program, it's done wonders for a lot of the buildings in town.
Sure.
And, uh, the fund, uh, right now has, I think, sixty or seventy thousand in it, which is basically one, the projects are limited to fifty thousand dollar reimbursement, so, you know, if Peter Gillespie gets one more request, it's gonna wipe out the fund, so we felt it was important to add the fifty thousand back in.
So the replacement of copper mill over Brook, uh, the construction for that drainage, is that still in here?
The design for it, or?
I have replacements, so on D two, we have a replacement of copper mill, uh, drainage program.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty, it's twenty-five reduction on D two.
Right, so if you look across on page.
I see CIAC general fund and then, and then two dashes.
Right, so if you look at page, if you're looking at page eight, replacement of copper mill, road culvert.
Yep.
Final design and, I'm assuming that said construction, or final design, um, it was reduced, CIAC recommended twenty-five thousand, I recommended, I proposed a reduction of twenty-five thousand, and this adopts my proposal.
But initially, you were intending on using the hundred and forty thousand dollars to put these back.
Um, I.
From the C, from, from the crack funds. So, so you did a reduction, then you were gonna use the correct funds in order to put them back?
Uh, that, was that one of the?
In our budget?
That was one of them, right?
Our theory of the, we identified the hundred and forty thousand as a funding source.
Right.
Back in January. Uh, we, we took that out of the investment account and isolated it, put it in cash, so it wasn't fluctuating with the rest of the investments, and we reduced the CIP projects in total, excuse me, by a hundred and forty thousand. And again, offering the correct funds as a way to restore those or, or to fund other projects.
So as of today, are those funds being used to restore this hundred and forty thousand dollars on D two?
No, they're being used to replace the roofs on High Crest.
Okay, so what funds are being used to put these back in?
Only the facade money was.
Was putting back.
Put back in.
Okay, okay. So the rest of these projects have not been put in, I'm, I'm asking, because, again, learning some of this stuff right now. Plan of conservation, the community center, these projects are not in.
So there were three projects that were eliminated in total as part of the hundred and forty thousand. It was a drainage project, it was actually the second phase, it looks like, of the copper mill drainage project.
So that's out now.
Correct.
The traffic sign inventory.
Traffic sign inventory was removed in total.
Sidewalk ramps for the ADA is out?
Well, let me just finish the, the third item.
I was going in order of D two, sorry.
Again, D two is, you know. The facade loan was the third, the third project that was removed in total in the town manager's budget and part of the hundred and forty thousand. There were also a number of projects that were trimmed, reduced some amount. Good example is the plan of conservation development and related studies. That was not eliminated, it was reduced from sixty thousand to fifty thousand. Again, working from page eight, where you can see the progression from recommended town manager budget and, you know, what's, what's built into the, the motions for this evening.
Sure, and that's, I mean, but D two even reflects that it's not necessarily out, but it's, some of them are reduction and some of them are out. So the sidewalk ramps for ADA compliance, is that reduced or out, the ten thousand dollars?
It's reduced, ten thousand dollars. Sixty-five.
Ryan's whispering in my ear that he's, he's looking at zero.
The CIAC recommended sixty-five thousand. The town manager recommended fifty-five thousand. And we're planning to adopt fifty-five thousand.
And the roof maintenance is reduced five thousand? Is not part of this budget?
Again, the roof, CIAC, uh, recommended twenty-five thousand for roof maintenance. Town manager recommended twenty thousand for the roof maintenance, and we're proposing to adopt twenty thousand.
Okay, so there was a five thousand dollar reduction in roof maintenance, and then Charles Wright portable. Yeah.
It was a, a five thousand dollar reduction from CIP by the town manager, kept whole by this council.
No, but, but it wasn't, because the town manager intended to put the five thousand dollars back in through CNEF, through crack, which is now being reduced. So that's not true. There was a reduction by the town manager with the funding source to replace all of this, but, but now that's been removed, and the final outcome is a five, is a reduction to this amount, which is on the right column, which I'm keep being told.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the proposed, the center column proposed general fund, that was in the town manager's proposed budget, correct?
Correct.
The pink book.
Correct.
It's correct.
With the replacement, but with the replacement being the hundred and forty thousand dollars from crack, which was going to then refund this. Which we talked about in January, February. So it was taken out of this because we knew we were gonna get it from another source, but now we're actually not doing it. To this, to these amounts. Is there another source that's gonna replace the Charles Wright roof ma, no, not Charles Wright, the routine roof maintenance, the five thousand dollars? No, it's being reduced. Correct? Is that a yes?
It's staying the same from the town manager's recommended budget. That's, this is, this, this pink book has to be the starting point, Matt.
When we got the presentation, though, it was reduced because there was a funding source to put it back in the CIAC, because we thought it was important, but now we're not putting it back. Is that right, Gary?
A funding source was identified to use it, ultimately, it's council's discretion how they wanna use it.
Of course. So the Charles Wright portable unit, it looks like perhaps in another area where, this is a five thousand dollar reduction, but it looks like we're actually replacing the whole unit through another source, is that?
No, we're, we're renovating the existing structure, uh, very similar to the way we did High Crest last year.
Right.
The High Crest, uh, project came in, if I remember correctly, the bids to replace the unit were upwards of five hundred thousand, five thirty-five, I believe, was the number.
It was a great move, it was awesome.
We used town staff, um, completed the project for, I don't know the exact number, somewhere's around seventy-five thousand dollars, is that ballpark?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the exact, it was under a hundred thousand.
It was under a hundred thousand.
Eighty-nine, yeah, eighty.
We felt that we could do the same exact work at Charles Wright. It's already in process, they've done some of the engineering and architectural work. The difference in the two, uh, projects is the High Crest project already had a new roof put on. The Charles Wright project will need to have a new roof put on, so we increased the cost estimate to a hundred and five, hundred, somewhere's in that area. We felt, town manager felt that that was sufficient to complete the project.
And it, but it doesn't look like this five thousand will make a difference, because we're just funding it out of ARPA anyways, for new ones, so it's not a big deal, for the five thousand dollar reduction.
We're not funding a new one, we're funding the project from the ARPA funds.
Yeah, well, for our group, for our staff to build.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm with you. I call that kinda new, though, new material.
Yeah, it looks new.
Right. Reduction to, for the community center, repair the parking lot and hallway, uh, blinds and carpet. We're not, that is being reduced, though, those resources to get that project done, correct?
Yes.
And I think in talking with our town engineer, repairing of the parking lots can be phased in. Uh, there are certain parts of the community center parking lot that, um, require more attention this year than what he could, um, do in, in future years. So he was comfortable with the reduction for the repair from twenty-five to twenty thousand dollars. And.
Would that, he was, what does he was comfortable mean? Does that mean it gets it done, or does it not get it totally done?
This year, he gets the majority of the, um, parts of the parking lot that need the most attention done, and, um, I would assume he would go back to CIAC next year with a request for additional funds to finish anything that he did not do this year.
It's, it's not a complete reconstruction of the parking lots, it's repair of certain areas.
Odole and crack and all that jazz. In this budget, are we, um, funding, there, there was a request for economic development, part-timer. Is that in this budget?
Yes, it is.
And is that consulting, or is that full-time?
It's a part-time job, I believe, fifty, fifty thousand, is it?
And so would that person be working sort of like here, part-time, under our flag, or is like a consultant vendor, kind of a thing?
Let Gary, uh, give us the details.
No, it'd be a part-time employee hired by the town.
And with that position, we felt that with the ARPA funding coming in at seven point six million dollars in the next three years, that, um, a majority of that ARPA funding would be used for economic development, infrastructure improvements, and that, uh, the person in that position, part-time position, would be a, um, would be needed to fulfill a, a lot of those, uh, hopefully requested, um, projects for economic development.
So this particular budget, as we move forward, what do you see, does this improve our way of life, this budget? Does this improve our town? And if so, in what way does it do that?
Councilman O'Connor?
Well, I, and maybe I speak for myself, but anytime my taxes don't go up and my services aren't being cut, I would say that's an improvement to town. And alls we have to do is look around at all the surrounding communities, and the fact that they were able to come in at flat budgets, or even in fact reduce taxes in light of what everyone has been hit with, I think it was our fiscal responsibility to do the best we could to come in at a budget that was not going to impact our town residents, but still make sure their garbage is picked up and the streetlights are on, the police are funded, and we did that. And so, in, in my opinion, this budget accomplishes that, and it also does what we committed to doing, was to always fight to provide a fiscal responsible budget, and so.
And to follow up on that, we're not taking one single plow off the road, one single leaf pickup off the road. We may not replace a blind at the community center, or fix a pothole at the community center, but I think, uh, everybody's quality of life in Weathersfield will continue. Didn't reduce one single, uh, maintenance, uh, maintainer at the public works mower, weed whacker. So fields will be mowed before all games, plows will be hitting the streets after snowstorms. Like you said, public safety continues, uh, the pools, we did open Willard Pool. We closed it unfortunately last year, we did, uh, open Willard Pool. We did hire back part-time, uh, parks and rec staff. I hate to continue to say COVID, um, put a damper on a lot of things, but, uh, I think everybody's quality of life over the last fifteen months has suffered, and this budget will improve, um, recreation for our kids and, and families over the summer. Uh, like I said, leaf pickups and, and streets will be plowed, um, and especially at a time when, you know, there's concern of eviction moratorium being extended again. You know, I think the public, and rightly so, Governor Lamont and President Biden, to, to some degree, have all agreed that, um, you know, residents of not only Weathersfield, but of Connecticut, have needed a, a break because of either job loss, um, income loss, uh, additional burdens with trying to care for kids while childcare has been closed, or parks and rec programs have been down. So, um, you know, we felt that, uh, you know, rather than an increase in taxes and an increase in the mill rate on an already struggling community, that a tax decrease would actually, to Councilman O'Connor's point, would actually improve their quality of life as well.
So besides a tax decrease, uh, uh, which, you know, the mill rate went down point zero two, I mean, according to this particular thing, but how have we improved?
The budget.
Budget. How, how have we, it sounds like everything you just said was stuff that we've been doing for years. We've had pools, plows, teachers. How have we, does this budget improve our town? Does this budget make our town, does this budget make our town great? Does this budget make our town prideful? Do we change the look of our town? Do we change its offerings? Do we increase any of that? I haven't seen any of that here. It's a, it's a, it's a stable budget, it is, it is what it is. It, it's, it's a maintained budget, but have we, what in here has improved our life? What in here that when we're done with this, we're now proud of? I mean, yes, you can say we're proud of the tax increase, but if there's, there anything else besides, I mean, tax decrease? Is there anything else that we are proud of that this budget provides the citizens of Weathersfield? Is there anything new in this budget that we can say, we've improved this town?
Yeah, one thing I wanna point out that I'm proud of in this budget is that we are going to be replacing and rebuilding those Charles Wright portable units, which, it's my understanding, they've been in disrepair and unusable for over a decade. And for years, the town council would put a few thousand dollars aside to eventually get to it. Well, we're funding the whole thing in this budget, and that's gonna make a difference in the lives of the families whose children go to Charles Wright. So that's one thing that is improving the community and that school in particular that I think I, I'm proud of.
And we did talk about the facade improvement program, funding that, fully funding the, the request of, um, CIP, uh, unfortunately, town manager did take it out, but we saw fit to, uh, to include the facade improvement program. And to your point with the part-time economic development, uh, staff person, I think having somebody dedicated to one hundred percent of our, let's just say fifty percent, a hundred percent of that person's fifty percent role would be, uh, devoted to economic development. I'll be happy if we get to break ground on a project that person saw to fruition in the next eighteen months, because we in, uh, included that position in this budget. If we can break ground on that, this budget improved the quality of life and, and brought us from where we are here to here.
The one other thing I'd like to add, uh, everyone should consider that we've been allocated seven point six million dollars to be spent over the next three years. We've only used a small portion of that, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're hoping that that money can be used towards economic development and improving the way of life in Weathersfield. And unfortunately, that money came in just a few months ago. To this date, we don't have clear guidance on what we can use that money for and how it's, we're very mindful of spending that money on something that an auditor's gonna. very mindful of spending that money on something that an auditor's going to come back in a year, or two, or three years and say, you shouldn't have used that money for X, Y, Z. So as time goes on, we're getting more and more guidance from the various groups that we deal with, CCM and so on, federal guidance. And Mike O'Neill and his staff have been, you know, pulling their hair out, trying to interpret some of the language and so forth. We weren't able to take on any projects, but they, we are hoping that those are in the pipeline, and we, we see good things happening with economic development in particular in town. So, yes, the budget itself is, I would say, more towards sustaining what we have. There are improvements, but we, I personally felt it's time to give everybody a break. A lot of people are still struggling. It's not visible, but a lot of people lost their jobs. They haven't gotten those jobs back. And to increase their taxes at this time, I just didn't agree with, so.
I understand that. So I think I just want to start this conversation, because we're going to get into a little bit of a different vision of Weathersfield for a sec. But there's like eighty percent that we all agree on here, right? I mean, I mean legitimately, like we can, you know, we got the Facebook, and we're all in our sort of bubbles, and we get the Fox, or the MSNBC, right, and all the rest of it. There's a ton of stuff. There's a nine oh vote on the health stuff here, right? There's no, there's no problem with that. There's a lot of stuff here we agree with. There's stuff from the truck, right, and the rest of the things. So I want to start off on a good thing that I think we're really, we're not necessarily divided by political party on most of the stuff. So I want to share with you guys like a little bit of a vision about what I think a budget might look like, that, that maybe you didn't craft, but maybe a lot of us are also have a vision for our town, because I think we all care about it. We have struggled in economic development for a while. We got the board in, that was through a lot of efforts by a lot of, a lot of good people. And it is sort of fairly typical that we, in Weathersfield, we do a lot of projects, eighty percent, ninety percent. The people that are on those building committees know that. We do the web school, but we're short the windows. We do the roads, but, you know, they're not all, or even, you know, there's, there's a lot of room still to go. There are many, even Celestine Middle School forgot like louvers, you know, and these types of things. In order to tackle the tax issue that we talked about, and I've talked about this with Councilor O'Connor a lot, we have, we are not on the same basis of our, our residential is gigantic compared to our commercial base. And because of that, and the zoning which we have, which are very small lots, and very, very dense in people, we have this offset, which is why we find our mill rate so high compared to with forty years ago. We had a better plan for the commercial sector. We would be in a little bit more of a balanced state. That said, it is imperative that we get our commercial state to an area where we can have high-density commercial and increase those tax revenues and start to level off that playing field. And I'm envisioning a Weathersfield that doesn't just dip its toe into economic development, because we can't. We have to change the dynamic. We need an economic developer that is here full-time, that is fighting for Weathersfield on a daily basis, that is going out to the big cities to bring in that money in order to develop our commercial sector, so that we can start to change the tax base and change the dynamic that we have suffered for, for decades now. It's not going to be an effort that is partial. It needs to be full-on. And for that, we would need a full-time economic developer and also a grant writer in support. Because in order to do that, we're going to need, it can't just be done here. We've tried two referendums to fund economic development, and they were not accepted by the people for various reasons. We're going to need state dollars. We're going to need federal dollars. And so in this budget, and for our leadership, we would propose that we push forward, not dipping our toe in the water, but knowing what Weathersfield needs. And when we look at all of our political stuff and the Weathersfield life, we are unified in this sense. There is never anyone, Democrat or Republican says, oh, yeah, economic development is always the number one issue. But in this budget, with the seven million dollars we got, not that we can necessarily use it for that, but that is a backdrop, we need to be as more, as prepared as ever in that, in that arena, in the Celestine Highway, in the Berlin Turnpike, in the Route Three Connector, and even transforming, in arms-length agreements, some residential where it's appropriate, now back into commercial. Turning low-density strip malls into high-density office space. These are the, this is the vision that I think we need to have for Weathersfield, is we plan our future budgets ten and twenty years out. And so for that...
Well, I actually, I do recall a lot of what you're saying. Because when we sat up at this dais, when Kathy Bagley was a interim Town Manager, and we brought Gary in, I think I remember you saying exactly that, similar, very similar in the new hire of our Town Manager, and that's, that's exactly why you thought that Gary would make a great choice as a Town Manager at that time. So I do, I do recall. So, I mean, we do have, you know, in this budget, we do pay a Town Manager who was hired not only for his management skills, but also for his economic development prowess, if you will. And we also have the part-time position that, you know, if that person does a great job, that could be a full-time position, and that may even be able to be paid for by ARPA funds at that time.
It may be, but then that would be a year from now. And the reality is, Gary's got a lot of hats on, and he's not the economic developer. He's, he's, he's one of the cheerleaders of that person. And so to really transform our town into greatness, these would be the type of positions which, which should be currently in the budget, so that we can move forward with that positive nature. In addition to that, it doesn't stop, but it always needs caretaking, and that is our roads. It's not sexy, but man, if you were in a road that's a disaster, it's your life every day. And I would, I would suggest, or I will be making emotional a little bit, that we increase that one point eight to two million dollars, two hundred thousand dollar increase in that line item. And for all the people that have good roads out there, it's not a problem. But for all those people that go on the roads every day, that those roads are seventy or below, you know, it's an issue. And we have to, we have to constantly maintain that, or else we will get behind, and we will have to do what I remember as Democrats, we had to do twenty, fifteen years ago now. Bond out roads, operating bonds, the worst. That's not, that's not good fiscal stewardship. Next is, we have to talk about, we have to talk about the police. And not necessarily in a negative way, but in a realistic way. We have problems with crime, stealing of cars, right? Talk about it all the time. We also need a little self-reflection. We need some self-reflection about how we're operating as a police department, and we need some self-reflection how we treat people. We need self-reflection about some of the studies that have been done in our own town. And we can do that. We're mature for the right things that we do right, or the things that we do wrong. And so with that, I'm going to be offering a moving from the, and we also have a problem with overtime, if you saw the overtime budget. Moving to, and if we also look at the police department, holistically, and over the last twenty-four months, we've seen this, but we've known about in the past, we have a large number of officers that are going to be at the moment of retirement. And we need to really start to go out and recruit heavily for great police officers for our town. And we need to open up those positions so that we can fight the crime that needs to be fighting. It's not just the car thefts. Personally, I think there's a huge amount of spam and elderly that have been taken advantage of, you know, through those types of operations, that also need to be looked into with the seriousness of a lot of other crime. But it exists. And so with the self-reflect, with the realizing in our town that we've got a lot of crime that needs fighting, and then also we can self-reflect, I'm going to propose a movement from the overtime budget, and then, and an overtime budget that is very, very large is an understatement, to, from overtime, three officers to, to patrol, so we can begin that heavy recruitment and getting our police department into a good shape in that sense, and then also some money in order for the police department can reflect on itself and have the assets to bring in outside consultants if needed, or extra training in order to understand any of the diversity issues and the other issues that outside of our town are flagging us for over the last five or six years, which I don't think, I don't think anybody up here is proud of, that particular portion of it. So how can we increase the pride in our police department? Let's take an inward look and see what steps can be taken in order to improve that. So I'll be making a motion for that as well. This is not, the next item that I'd like to propose to you is for a vision for the town of Weathersfield, is the realization that, in some respects, green means gold. And by that, I don't mean green as in dollars. I mean green as in trees and bushes and so forth. So the next couple items you're going to see are a vision for Weathersfield that improves the town in that nature. With the overhead wires that have been going in, we've seen trees be chopped down at an alarming rate. And this is an old Weathersfield. We enjoy to sit under them when we're out to dinner, and also throughout all of our neighborhoods. So I'm going to be putting forward an idea that we increase the tree budget by five thousand dollars for a set of new trees that can be put where the tree warden deems appropriate, but can also provide increase in our street line trees and our park trees. If you've been at some of the parks recently, Millwoods Park, a lot of trees coming down, but not being replaced. Really good shading and a quality of life for all those parents that go and watch those baseball games, soccer games, and you guys know you've been there. That would really improve, and of course, of course, the environment. We're also, I noticed a couple reductions that I thought were a little nickel-and-dimey to some of the people that, you know, just regularly serve our town. And that's in the fire department, you've got two areas, and fire training and firestorm standby, two thousand dollars each. We don't need a nickel-and-dime these guys and ladies that, that serve for us. And, and that I think is, that section is important to them. And then as we look forward, we talk about strength. We've talked about a lot of strength. We talk about changing the lives of our citizens. These are global things. This is not for one person or two people, the things I'm talking about. This is for everybody. Roads, police, parks, right? The next thing in the vision of Weathersfield that we can put forward to you is also to strengthen our volunteerism and in our public servants. Our fire department, while it is strong, requires recruitment all the time. And so I'm suggesting, or we'll be making a motion that in the line five, two, two, one, five, which is the fire department recruitment line, is that we allow the chief and give him some resources, happens to be him in this case, in order to go out and continue a streamlined recruitment, whether it's fire explorers, going into schools, and various things that he, in this case, deems fit. At least he has some resources there in order to streamline and, and increase the population to the fire department. It's important that that recruitment is strong at all times, unless we start to want to be moving through to a paid fire department, which we thought this was, that would be the hardest budget in the history probably of the town of Weathersfield. And it's important that the volunteerism is strong. And the same is true with the police department. We've heard that recruitment in the police department can be very difficult. We pay top dollar here in Weathersfield, which is great and important for those people, but we need to create a nice streamlined group of recruitment for our police department, as well as fire, and likely also, also for ambulance. So I'm going to move that we put a five thousand dollar portion in the police department as well, for police explorers, thank you very much for doing that, for police explorers, and other similar recruitment efforts, in order to make sure that our police department is, has a, has a good stock of young men and women that are willing to come in and be part of our community. Also, you can't look much farther than the town seal on the next one. We've had an issue regarding litter at the Cove Park. This has been going on for a while now. It comes from all different people, but every so often, we talk about the litter that is going on down there, and keeping that place free for recreation for everybody, whether it's out-of-towners or in-towners, and even the people that live down in that section of the town. In addition to that, if you notice on our capital improvements project, there's also money that's in there, excuse me, hiccup. There's also money that has been designated for an improvement of that front facade area, tree scaping, landscaping, et cetera. Not overboard, but it makes that area something that we can be proud of as a town, something that we can improve as a town. And in addition to picking up the litter and the trash on a more regular basis, conversations that I've had with Gary for a while, we're also going to be putting in money in order to actually fix up that whole area, so we can be proud of that waterfront, attract people for investment. They come down here, either, either investment, or they'll come down here and they'll recreate, and then they'll go out to eat in Old Weathersfield.
Not to interrupt Matt, if I could. I believe there's a Cove Park fund. Is that, Gary, is that correct?
There is.
So, you know, maybe some of these items that Matt's discussing about the Cove could be paid for through that fund.
I think that fund was designated in a very narrow way, and there's heavy restrictions. We have had this conversation. It was very thoughtful though, Tom. And the air, the line item in our particular budget is for, is specifically for improvements that are outside of those particular restrictions. And then next, we're going to talk about sports in town and sporting. And, and this is the, this is the last item I have for a new and improved vision of Weathersfield. And that is, in the Weathers, in the, in the Millwoods Master Plan, there's a section for increased baseball fields or Little League fields. And as that moves over, then taking care of some of the most popular sports in town, which are football, lacrosse, field hockey, and soccer. And there's a section in the upper field for, a new field for those particular items, and it's in the master plan. It's been there for years and years, never funded. And now we're at a moment in our time where we can make a real investment in our town, especially with some of the dollars that are coming in from the feds in order to offset some of the drainage and irrigation portion of this.
You're speaking about the upper field in Millwoods?
That's true, yes. And there's...
Six hundred and something thousand dollars.
That's correct. Absolutely. Yep. So with that, and then two new baseball fields, which will, for, they're kind of like T-ball fields. In addition to that, we've also, and Mike and I have talked, Mayor has talked, and I have talked about this recently, is the lack of the use of the green actually is sort of like a T-ball area, which I've had people from out of town in amazement that that actually happens, but recently has been grown in, I think you might say. So we've also allocated some funds in order to put that back into use. And as someone who has a T-baller, but I'm not exclusive of this, we play on the T-ball fields, and crooked fields, and unlevel fields. Sometimes they're underwater over at Mitchell. And it's, no one's saying that you got to have an outside, you know, fence going around the whole thing and dugouts or anything. But bases that go in there, and maybe the fields level, would be nice. And I think it's the standard that a lot of other people have used, not a lot of, a few have used, that a lot of other towns have, and it would be a real improvement for the recreating, the recreating population in our town. So with that, I'm going to make a motion, oh wait, we haven't even put anything on the table yet, so I'm going to wait, but that's, those are, that's what's coming. It's not, I'm not hiding it. It's a, it's a vision for Weathersfield that by next year, we would be looking at a new and improved and clean Cove. It's a vision that has new recreation facilities. It's a vision that looks inward at our police department and strengthens it at the same time. It's a vision that creates recruitment effort, new and improved recruitment efforts for fire and police. It allows them to do training and, and firestorm standby. It allows for the greenery of the entire town through, through the tree budget, through the increased amount of trees, and, and the paving of our roads. There's many things that we agree with. There's, there's a thousand things here that we agree with, and just before, we had a great vote, a good vote on insurance. But this vision is something that improves our town, doesn't keep it stagnant, and allows us as a council to lead. And I hope that you can agree with that when you hear the motions and how much it costs. Will it be significant? Not really in the grand scheme of things. Yeah, it's a lot of money for an individual, but to a town, not so much.
Could, could you share with us the dollar amount total before we get to the motion?
We're going to have to, we're going to have to add them up, so to speak, but I believe it's about a one percent tax increase overall. And we'll have to, we'll do that, and we'll find out exactly what it is. And if, and if you're, if that's not something that's palatable to you, we respectfully can disagree on that, and that's okay. But we'll have to, I, because a lot of the things that were coming in were just brand-new to us as far as the offsets, including the seven hundred and something thousand dollars from the town, which we just recently got. And it may even end up to be less, depending on whether or not we use the fiscal year twenty-one expenditures. But we'll have to sort of add them up and see where, see where it lies. But we'll have to sort of add them up and see where, see where it lies.
I just had one, a couple of questions, but I'll start off with one and then I'll turn it over to others. So your request of three new officers from overtime?
Correct.
Would that be in addition to our current roster? Or would they replace those that retire?
That would be in addition.
So you're, you want more police officers?
I think, yes. Do we seem to be understaffed at this time, especially as it relates to overtime? So that those police officers can then do the overtime that other people have been assigned.
And this is for recruitment, or not recruitment, but for junior patrol?
Yeah, a new, a new patrol, patrol person.
Gary, refresh my memory. How many, over the last month, new police officers have we had join the force? Maybe not a month, less than three months.
In the last month was one. You know, I can't recall. I would say since January, maybe three have been sworn in. There were a number certified and then, I think all certified, actually, none from the academy. So I would, I'm trying to ballpark, but I would say since January, there's been about three.
Three new police officers?
I want to say there's four vacancies that still remain. Three or four vacancies that remain due to retirements.
And then those three new police officers that came on board, we trained them through post?
They, they have come certified, so they're still with a field training officer, but just not for as long.
Okay, oh, they are trained, so it does take them a little while to...
Correct, unlike if they were just a new candidate, we would have to, they would have to go through an academy and then field training officer. In this case, they've already come certified, so.
And then maybe Councilwoman Pelletier would know this from her village improvement days. A new tree has been purchased or supplied by the Village Improvement Association over the years?
Oh, yeah, every year we donate money to the tree fund. And the, I think we just donated $1,500 in April. And we always ask the, the Weathersfield Beautification Trust to, you know, match whatever we give. I know they give a lot of money too. I'm not affiliated with them, but we have a good relationship with their organization. They always donate to the tree fund as well. And the tree fund, you know, any organization or individual can donate. It's, so we do, they do get a lot of money donated to plant trees, which is really nice.
Okay, and then finally, we do have town staff that pick up litter at Cove Park. And I believe we've increased it from five days a week and we added a Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, for pickup of garbage?
I can't recall if we've added another week or another day in the week. But yes, we do, in this time of year, we bring in part-time help as well, or seasonal or temporary help.
Okay, so that's paid for through our part, summer, part-time employment?
Through physical services, yes.
For rubbish or garbage cleanup?
Correct.
Throughout town, okay. Those are just two, three points I just wanted to make.
Mayor, I didn't want to interrupt you prior. Gary, so with the, with the police department, what does that bring our current roster to? Do you know, is it leveled out where we need it, or are we still under manned on the roster?
No, yeah, we still have vacancies in the department. And frankly, we have a number of individuals who are reaching retirement. And while they might not have been for retirement age or at this time, we, you know, you know that they're coming. So there is an anticipated level of retirement that could be happening in the next two to three years, two years.
Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Gary, when we get the various budget, when you get the various budget requests from departments, for example, the police department, when it, when normally they say, this is what we need. We need extra officers to reduce our overtime. Did we cut any asks for personnel?
There was no reduction for personnel. I think, you know, just in conversations with the chief over the past two years, we could always use more officers, but there wasn't an ask.
I know, we did discuss overtime. We thought it was, you know, off the charts. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the response we got back was, that's what we spend each year and that's what we need to run the department.
Yeah, the overtime reflects coverage that's needed due to variety of circumstances, call-ins, vacation, coverage required, depending upon what's going on. I think we had an increase last year or two years ago due to just activity that was going on, that we had to bring people in.
So, if I may, so the question about the overtime, so we're okay with $800,000 in overtime with no hand on it? That's, that's what it sounds like?
No, that's, that's not correct. We asked, we asked for a reduction in overtime. We thought it was, I personally thought it was ridiculous that...
I was in agreement with you.
To spend that kind of money on overtime.
Right.
And I was told, no, we, basically, that's the number it has to be. We're not allowed to reduce it. And if you go back over the four or five years of history, that's basically where it's at.
Okay, I, I agree with you. I'm, I don't like overtime. I agree with you. I just, I'm trying to find a way where we can mitigate having so much overtime and do something that's departmental, actually support with, if we're saying we're under manned, will that manning allow us to decrease overtime? And we had the discussion. I'm just asking the same question you're asking.
When we, if I just can add one other thing, when, when we're working on this budget, we rely heavily on the department heads to tell us what they need. So, for example, we talked about recruitment for the fire department, which I, you know, fully agree with. But that's not something that they put in their request. You know, we need to spend more money on recruitment to build it up. We didn't cut that, we didn't ask to, you know, reduce that or anything. I personally, I don't think it's my position to tell the police department how to run their department. I don't know anything about policing, okay? So, while, when I look at the numbers, I say, my God, you're, you're spending all that overtime. To me, there's a point at which so many hours of overtime justifies a new body full-time, right? You know, if it's 10 or 15 hours a week, maybe it doesn't cover the benefits of another employee, but 700,000.
From a management standpoint, I'm not going to argue if you want to put another officer on the rolls.
No, I'm talking about the concept, you know, spread across all departments. It's, it's, we rely heavily on, on the various department heads. And we asked, at least I asked, I didn't like asking and I got some different remarks, but hey, if we have to cut, reduce your budget by a percent or 2%, what, what can you do? In some cases, the response was nothing, there's no place to cut, which was pretty much the case with the police department.
The chief did say it. And, oh, I'm just, just to go on with Mr. Deputy Mayor's train of thought of recruitment, fire department recruitment last year, I do remember the chief, fire chief, talking about recruitment. And one thing that would help that we did pass in last year's budget was a retirement pension increase for recruitment. And I know that was, was an ask of the chief last year. But if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall any request for a increase for him for recruitment this year. But he definitely did ask last year for a tool to, to increase numbers at the, the fire department. And the retiree pension was one that we did provide for him. I'm sorry, Councilman O'Connor?
No, I just wanted to add, add a comment. About an hour and a half ago, I believe Counselor Forrest asked a question, what are you proud about in this budget? And one of the comments I had made was, I was proud because I felt like it listened to our constituents. I don't know if anyone else on the council got phone calls saying, I love the new budget, the manager came in. Do you think we could increase it a little? In fact, what I got was, what was the manager smoking, no offense? And what are you guys even thinking based on the reality of the situation we currently live in? And so while I love Counselor Forrest like a brother, I will not in any shape or form support any type of increase to the proposed budget. And here's the reason why, is economic development, yes, I absolutely agree. It would be great if we could have, you know, three full-time economic developers. And, and I have to tell you, it's incredibly refreshing to hear the left side of the table talking about funding the police when for the last four years, that's all you heard from the left side was defund the police. So I think that's nice to see the pendulum swing in that way. But we talk about trees, we talk about the fire department, Cove, sports. I mean, we could add in, let's redo Keisha Farms and build a giant bubble and make an astroturf field inside there. That would serve everybody in the community, be wonderful, be a great way. But the reality is, we don't have the money to do it. We don't. And I wish we did, but the reality is, we don't. And to even think about increasing costs at this point in time, to me, takes a tone deaf ear to every phone call we received, to every person who had a forego a bonus this year, whose, one of their working spouses had to stay home to take care of the kids so the other spouse could work remotely. I just think of all the time to start talking about increasing and adding costs, this is something that I could never, would never support, even though I do agree, I would love to do all of those things, but we don't have the money to do it. And so while it sounds great, the reality and the practicality of it is, it would take a tone deaf ear to everyone in Weathersfield who has asked us to do just the opposite.
If, if I may jump in on that, and, you know, we've had many of conversations and speaking and listening constituents, I would like to just say that, for one, not all the left has ever said defund the police.
I, I, that was a tongue-in-cheek.
I just want to put that out there first. And for two, listening constituents is a two-way streak. It is not just listen to one side and not the other side. If you have residents calling you and they're concerned about the budget and they look at a $1.2 million increase, a decrease on the Board of Education, they question it. They want to know, why are we doing that? If they see a decrease in the police fund, why are we doing that? If they see a decrease in the public safety in general, why are we doing that? So these questions are coming from having those conversations. Why are we decreasing this and why are we not funding this? It's not saying I want to increase the budget. I just want to see if there's another way to look at those funds to invest in those things we need to invest in. In order to get something positive within our town, we're going to need to invest in those things. We need a full-time developer to know and pull in the resources we need so those, the budget can stay low. If we don't have any money coming into Weathersfield, how are we ever going to maintain a low and lower budget? We're not, it's not going to happen. So all we're saying is that we need to invest in the town and stop running scared from the budget.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Ryan, I just want to speak a little bit on the economic development position. Some of us on this side also were talking about full-time position. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the recommendation from the EDIC was, they wanted to start with a part-time position. They didn't, they didn't come in and say, we want a full-time, or we want two people, or three, or whatever. They thought, you know, start out with a half position and, and work from there. Now, I don't necessarily agree with that. I thought, you know, there was probably plenty of work for a full-time position, but we...
Understatement of the sentiment right there.
You know, we went by what we were given by the committee, commission, committee, I don't know. So, and, and going back to the phone calls, I did, I'd received numerous phone calls about that position. We, we need to fund that position. And they didn't say, we need to fund a full-time position. They said, we need to fund what was recommended, so.
Thank you.
Tom, I understand your, your thoughts. And there's a lot of agreement on this dais here today. Just like with the truck, though, we can't be afraid to lead. We can't be afraid to lead our staff. We can't be afraid to lead our town. And that's the, the vision, I think, that we're presenting before this town is one where we're able to lead to prosperity economically, socially, recreationally. And a small increase in taxes would do a tremendous amount to changing this town for the better. And, and it's not necessarily about taxes, it's about what we need to have a great town. And it's about the pride that we have in our town. And you can see the discussion that we had about, and the different things that we're looking forward to improving about our town. It's not, it's not that costly at the end of the day for a town.
Back to my question earlier, do you have a fiscal note for this?
Well, since we're not in the legislature and, you know, I haven't have the giant caucus in the group of team, we've got a motion prepared to, there's no fiscal note, so to speak, because we don't have the staff at the town manager's office to create such a note.
Well, if you give us a number, I think Mike could plug in to the algorithm for page... One, two, oh, it's actually not in this one, it is in scenario D E. So, I don't want to put Mike on the spot to quickly do math, but he was pretty good when we were plugging things in.
He was sitting in front of his laptop.
I sort of wish, you know, like, your proposals you're bringing forth now, you know, the night we're supposed to be voting on the budget. We had a number of budget deliberations where we discussed all these things. And I, and I, it's that the time to raise all this was during our budget deliberations, not right before we're voting on the budget. I just feel like it's a little bit of grandstanding, you know, like, but like you said, we all, you know, agree, you know, on a lot of this stuff. And, and I agree with Counselor O'Connor that this is, it's all wonderful, but it all costs money. And it's not a matter of being, you know, we have to lead our way to prosperity. You're talking about taxing our way to prosperity, and I don't think it works that way. We're, we're having, we're getting over $7 million in federal funds that we are, can spend on a lot of these things. And specifically, economic development, I think all of us agree that the, the federal funds should be focused on economic development, something that will bring income into our town and grow the tax base. And, and that's something that we can use the federal fun, funds for. And I don't want to take that money from the, the citizens of Weathersfield and raise their taxes when we have over $7 million of federal money that can be spent toward much of that.
Can I just make three quick points? I think we all kind of agree that we want to genuinely invest in things, whether it's education, parks and rec. But, you know, earlier you asked, what makes this budget great? Or what makes, in this budget, makes this town great? I don't think we can make a town great with a single budget. A, I think that takes years of good budgeting to happen. And the only way I think we're really going to do that, and I'm sure since we're talking about economic development, you'd agree, is some grand list growth, which, yes, you get by hiring more people. But I think, and not all business owners are going to say the same thing, I think you're going to get that by having stable taxes. I, you know, granted, there are, some businesses are looking for different things, so they're not all going to say that. But I think a lot of business owners are looking for stability when it comes to the taxes they're going to have to pay. And, and I think if we really want to grow the grand list, we've got to show them we're being as fiscally responsible as possible. We want you to go into every budget season feeling comfortable that, you know, things might change a little, but you're not going to see something drastic. My second point in regards to it being not that costly, if it's a 1%, 2% increase, whatever it may be, it might not seem costly in the grand scheme of $113 million budget. But, I mean, I even remember, I forget what the exact figure was in the beginning in the town manager's proposed budget, but when it breaks down the average cost by family, it, it's costly. You know, I get when you look at little numbers compared to big numbers, it's not that costly. But it's costly to the average family, especially when you take into account, I think it said the average homeowner also has two cars, not one. You know, you take the whole enchilada, I guess. And I, I just disagree with the assessment that it's, it's not that costly. And my third point would be as far as... And my third point would be as far as wanting to lead. I agree we want to lead, but to be honest with you, decreasing the mill rate is not status quo. At least the last few years, it has not been status quo. And it's not fun or easy to get up here and cut things $5,000 or $10,000. So I, I guess I would also disagree with the assessment that we're not leading. I'd say we're, we're actually doing things differently by decreasing the mill rate, even if it's .02. I, I would just disagree with the assessment that that's not leading. Because at the end of the day, we can only go off of what we hear from constituents, whether they're on our side or against us, listen to people during public comment, and yes, we pay attention to the social media and such, and kind of make an informed decision. So I would just respectfully say I disagree with some of those assessments.
Further comment? Okay. I believe we have nine motions in front of us. We do have motion number one. If I'm correctly, I think Deputy Mayor?
Yep. Stay with me.
Oh, yeah. Need stronger glasses.
I'll make a motion that the budget as submitted by the town manager on April 5th, 2021, be and hereby is amended as follows. Decrease in the amount of $5,156, Account 120, Town Manager. Decrease $3,823, Account 140, Information Technology Services. Decrease in the amount of $2,490, Account 150, Town Clerk. Decrease amount $4,000, Account 160, Elections. Decrease in the amount of $4,269, Account 220, Finance. Decrease $7,587, Account 230, Tax Assessor. Decrease $703, Account 240, Tax Collector. Decrease $6,683, Account 300, Planning and Development. Decrease $4,087, Account 410, Building Inspections. Decrease $91,654, Account 420, Police. Increase $23,667, Account 430, Town Live Radio. Decrease $2,193, Account 440, Fire Marshal. Decrease $4,000, Account 450, Fire Suppression. Decrease $5,369, Account 510, Engineering. Decrease $120,823, Account 520, Physical Services. Decrease $120,000... Sorry. Decrease $45,000, Account 610, Central Health District. Decrease $126,611, Account 620, Social and Youth Services. Decrease $35,833, Account 700, Public Library. Decrease $167,637, Account 800, Parks and Recreation. Increase $58,966, 996, Account 920, Debt Services. Decrease $556,121, Account 950, Transfers CIP/CNEF. Total $1,111,376. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
What was the basis of the public library reduction?
Some of it is, the reduction has to do with employee benefits and medical... Correct, Mike?
That's correct.
And then there was a 1% reduction in their operating budget.
And I, if I'm not mistaken, I do remember the librarian telling us there are a number of off-budget accounts that have been doing pretty well for the library. And if she, if need be, she could tap into those.
Could I... There's a quick question that I have on the, I guess it's, it's either in D or scenario F. It doesn't really even matter. On the bottom of those two items, there's a section in the fund balance analysis, and it talks about excess revenues and under-expended projected. Are those still out there to be used?
Where would you see this?
You see dollar amounts?
No, I see dashes because it says aggressive estimate $500,000, aggressive estimate $350,000.
That's anticipated carryover from this year's budget.
But that has not, that has not been applied, though, right, Mike? So that would increase the amount above, the fund balance above 10%?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, quick math I did today. Now I can't remember, but we're at 10.01, I want to say was, if we add those back, because the fund balance would be a percentage of the adopted budget. So with a lower budget from $113 million to $111 million, you would actually take that as a percentage, correct?
Actually, not 111, but 109.
109.
Which would, you would, we would exclude the road fund from that calculation.
Gotcha, okay. So it actually would even go up a little bit more. It's, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it was greater than 10%, but less than 11%.
And this particular, I'm sorry, Mike, we good?
I think so.
No, I didn't want to cut anybody. I didn't know if you finished. Are we, this particular motion is just for the expenditures on the town side, and I'm just, and I'm pretty sure, just being clear, though, if we were to increase anything to the education budget, that would be, that amendment would be to a separate, separate item, correct?
That would be, I believe, to item three.
Are we in agreements on that, Gary and Mike?
Yes.
Board of Education, change, change in Board of Education expenditure would be to that item?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion number one has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Mike, I can just have the floor on that one. I'm going to move to amend the budget. Not going to go into all the reasons, because I think we've talked a lot, but they'll be known, of course. You want to do the honors? You want me to do the honors? So I'm going to move to amend the budget to include a full-time economic development director for a $70,000 increase to line 300. I'm going to move to increase the grant writer. Also on line 300, at a cost of $90,000. Most of these numbers have been gone through, you know, just reviewed by the town manager. I'm going to move to increase the road fund, $200,000 to pave our roads. I'm going to place in line, move to place in line $5,220 of the police budget, $20,000 for the police, for the police department's use and review of its internal, of its internal policies, and a review of our police department for any discriminatory behavior, or any, or even also for use for training for the, for the police department, especially as it relates to the various studies that have come out regarding our police department and its treatment of individuals. I'm going to also move $405,000 from, move to, from $5,001 of the police department in, into $5,001 of the police department for three new patrol officers, and out of $5,002, police overtime budget. I move to increase the tree budget, which is for trees, five, line item 53330. Increase fire recruitment, that was $5,000, increase fire recruitment, $5,000, line 52215. Put back for the fire department, fire training, increase $2,000, 52212. Increase $2,000 for the fire department, fire storm standby, 52225. Create a budget, 52215, for police recruitment explorers, $5,000. Also, the same line item, 52225, $5,000 for police department explorers in the police department and, and recruitment. $8,000 to increase, increase the regularity of Cove Park litter cleanup for the entirety of Cove Park, line 50001. Replace $10,000 back to the Economic Development Facade Improvement Program, 5805. $30,000 into CIP expenditures for the line item for Cove Park Landscaping Shoreline Vista, which improves all the landscaping and, at Cove Park.
Excuse me, Councilman Forrest, you had mentioned restore the $10,000 back to the facade loan improvement program?
Yes.
Where did you see the $60,000?
I believe it went from 60 to 50. I thought that's what we talked about in the facade loan program that was reduced from the 140,000.
The plan of conservation and development went from 60 to 50. The facade loan improvement as submitted by EDI, CIAC was at 50, town manager was at zero, we were at 50.
Okay. And I would like to remove that, since it wasn't seconded yet, I think I have that ability.
You sure do.
I agree with you, Mayor. Let's see. I'd like to allocate, I move to allocate 400...
Which actually increases $10,000 for something else that you might want to spend on then.
We could do that. Let me know, I'd like to work with you on that. Like to increase, I'd like to allocate $425,000 to build a new soccer, lacrosse, field hockey and football field at Millwoods Park. The original, the original 620, the original plan was for $625,000, but the remainder, we can use the ARPA funds for drainage and irrigation. Like to allocate 200,000, I'll move to allocate, to amend and allocate $200,000 to the Millwoods master plan for two Little League field rebuilds and renovations on the Mitchell Field area. Any remaining funds needed outside of this, we would look to the ARPA funds to cover the gap. And lastly, I move to allocate $10,000 for the rebuild of the T-Ball Stadium, I say that with a smirk, at the Weathersfield Town Green for baseball on the Weathersfield Town Green. And if we can get notation, fiscal note on that particular, I would like to use some of the increased amounts that we estimate and move that we use, the $500,000 in excess revenues projected from this amount, along with $350,000 of underpaid from this particular fiscal year, and donate it, so to speak, or move it toward, a last fiscal year, and move it toward this fiscal year as an offset. And that's the end of my amendment. But I need a second, if you want to give me one.
Second. Amendment has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion's rejected. Item number two. Oh, yeah, actually, we do have to vote on. Motion number one, that the budget be, as submitted by the town manager on April 5th, 2021, be and hereby amended as per the orders of town manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion carries. I think I may have called you town manager, Deputy Mayor.
I'm the town manager?
I think I, I think I said town manager, not Deputy, not Deputy Mayor. Motion number two.
I'll make a motion that the budget as submitted by the town manager on April 5th, 2021, be and hereby is amended as follows, to decrease the total appropriations for school purposes by $1,232,459.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilman Forrest?
Move to amend this motion? And I'd like to say, I, there's portions of this I agree with, so I'm not going to, I'm not amending just to throw back for the sake of throwing back. I pay taxes like everybody else. And I don't like excess spending, and I think there's a lot of symbiotic relationship there, but we did need to move forward. And I'm, I'm very concerned about the outplacement costs, having served on the Board of Education. And also, the decrease in legal costs does not seem appropriate at this particular time with the type of environment that we're in. So I move to increase the Board of Education budget by seven, four, five, $60,000.
Second.
Amendment has been offered and seconded. Discussion? Count, Deputy Mayor?
I'd just like to bring to everyone's attention that the Board of Ed has received additional funds, approximately $607,000, SRT2 funds, that do not show up in their operating budget request. And I suggest that those funds could be used by the Board of Ed in, in many ways to accomplish the same ideas that your motion is discussing.
Further discussion? This motion is on the amendment put forth by Councilman Forrest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. We do have the second motion before us, as presented by Mr. Deputy Mayor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number three.
I'll make a motion that the total appropriation for school purposes be set at $57,205,259 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? Motion's...
I, I thought, you know, we, we had a lot of touch and go there, oh, sorry.
Councilman Forrest?
Thank you. Been a lot of touch and go there, and it seems like most of the funds have been kept in place. And I know that, you know, now that public sees a lot of the background coming up and a lot of discussion that we've had, but I'm glad that most of that funding seems to be staying with the Board of Education. And I, I think that's a, I think that's a good move.
And if, if we're still in discussion, I said it earlier, but I, I do want to compliment Mr. Carey, Chairman of the Board of Education. We did last year and this year work together on crafting this total Board of Ed town budget. I believe the Board of Ed did have some laudable goals, and, and we worked towards fulfilling at least, you know, I think 98.9% of those. So my hat goes off to not only Councilman, or Board of Ed Chair Carey, but the entire Board of Ed for, for their presentation and their willingness to work with us to get to this number. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number four.
I'll make a motion that the town council adopt the town budget as submitted by the town manager on April 5th, 2021, and as amended by the town council in the sum of $52... and as amended by the town council in the sum of $52,528,859 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Forrest.
Mayor, as discussed before, we can make this town great in the current situation that we're in. And this is a very maintain budget. It doesn't change Weathersfield significantly for the positive. It just makes us, doesn't make us better. And we really could do it with some of the discussions that we've had before. We could have new town fields, we could clean up the cove, we could create recreation, new recreation for a lot of our kids. We could have ensured that outplacement funds were there for the kids that need it. There's so many areas where we can improve economic development, et cetera. And I know it's not going to pass because we're here and we're mature. Next time, as we move forward, if, if, and maybe I won't be, if I'm sitting here, and if we're sitting here, and many of us are, I really hope that we can get together to craft a budget that changes our town for the better significantly, rather than just maintains it. I will not be voting for this budget.
Further comment? If you will, I'm, I gotta, you know, just take my hat off to a lot of the work that our Parks and Rec do for recreation trails, both Wilkes Farm and, and the committee that our town manager is chairing with the proposed work to be done, to be determined at Keisha Farms. We don't know what's going to go on. We've got many of, some outstanding recreation and trails throughout, green ways throughout town. My hat goes off to the town staff. I do get the complaints from residents on Saturdays that garbage is over, no, on Monday mornings, sorry, that garbage is overflowing, sometimes at Cove Park, which is a testament to, to the work that we've done to attract people to not only Weathersfield, but to the Cove in particular. But they also do a great job because when they do get word that those garbage pails are overflowing, town staff is there to make sure they're cleaned up, not only thrown out, but cleaned up around them. I also want to say that we've done a great job recruiting firefighters over the years. We do have some of the best police officers as well. One gentleman just came in from the city of Hartford, if I'm not mistaken. Two came earlier, I believe also from the city of Hartford as well. So we are, we are attracting and retaining some of the best police officers. That is a job that does have a lot of wear and tear on the mental well-being of officers. So we do, in fact, see officers retiring at 20, 25 years. It's my hope that, yeah, as they do retire, we start to fill those, those roles as we are doing right now with the three most recent hires from Hartford. Hate to see folks retire early from, or not retire early, but fulfill their duty on the police department and fire department. But I believe we are adequately prepared to, to fill those staff positions, so. With that, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number five.
Sure, Mayor. I'll make the motion that the total appropriations for the capital and non-recurring road fund be set at $1,800,000 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion, uh, discussion? Item number five. Councilman Forrest.
I move to amend the 1.8 million dollars for our road fund to an increase of $200,000 for a total of $2 million.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Our discussion on that, discussion? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I think we should also consider that some of these road projects are funded by the state. Notably, the section of Walcott Hill Road from Jordan Lane to Victoria Road to the tune of $3.6 million, it's not reflected in the 1.8 million dollars. So we are trying to be as aggressive as possible with improving our roads. It's a never-ending battle. We have looked at bonding, or I asked the question about bonding, for a significant amount of money to try and get ahead of the curve for roadwork. And the, the reply came back that it just doesn't work that way. The roads are going to continue to deteriorate at a faster rate than, than we can repair them every year. So to try and bond five, 10, 15 million dollars to try and get ahead of the curve, you're still not gonna, you're not going to get there. It's going to be a continual several million dollars each year, so. I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you. I would like to also add that the legislature recently passed the highway usage tax, which is an infrastructure tax that is a fee on large overweight vehicles, typically your tractor trailers. And I think there's been discussion in the legislature that some of that money be used for local road improvement. Additionally, there's a, an account, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, Town Aid Road account that is from the state to municipalities?
That's right.
And we are a beneficiary of that?
Yes, it's actually, it's part of the 1.8 million. It reduces the tax levy for the road fund. So it's, it's an offset to that, so it's included in the 1.8 million.
Okay, so maybe what we can do as a collective council is lobby our state delegation to maybe increase our Town Aid Road funds to, continue to help offset that 1.8 million dollars. So without further discussion, the amendment for an additional 200,000, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion is rejected. Item number six. Oh, sorry, I did that a second time. Item number five, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. On to item number six.
I'll also make the motion that total appropriations for library purposes be set at $2,057,555 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number seven.
I'll make a motion that the total amount to be raised by taxes for the town, library, school, and capital and non-recurring road fund purposes combined be set at $93,796,374 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
Ayes have it, motion carries. On to item number eight.
Make the motion that the general fund tax rate on all taxable property be set at 40.15 mils for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. And finally, item number nine.
I'll make the motion that the capital and non-recurring roads fund tax rate on all taxable property be set at .52 mils for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. That, your friends, is the budget. I believe there's no other items on the agenda. Any discussion at all?
Moves to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, it's been made, second. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?